Melton.
Here.
Row.
Festerston is absent.
Goodwin.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for open remarks by Councilmember Don Row.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may have, please be seated. Well, clearly, we're in the dog days of summer. This last week has been a tough week to be in Nebraska, but, you know, the ancient Greeks and the Romans, they tried to look to the stars to figure out, you know, why did things happen? And so there's a bright star called Sirius that is part of a constellation that looks like a howling dog. And Sirius, from the first part of July until about the middle part of August, co-rises and kind of co-sets with the sun. So they believe that the heat generated in this time period was because of that star. And I don't know if that's right or not. Honestly, all I know is it's hot. And it really gives me a great appreciation for the men and women that are willing to work out in that heat every day. You know, our roads continue to need to be repaired. Our parks need to be maintained. You know, our police are out there patrolling the street and firefighters are responding to emergencies, and we really do appreciate the work that they do. And it reminds me, you know, we come to work on Tuesdays. We're not working out in 95-degree heat, but we are expected to be here. Our constituents expect us to be here to do the work, and it's something that we signed up for. I had a good friend, Rich Pauls, who was a former city council member from District Five, who also served in the state legislature and was an administrator at Millard Public Schools, and I quote, "Let's get to work."
An affidavit publication is on file, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask you to please silence or turn off all electronic devices. A reminder that you will have three minutes to speak on an agenda item. Please stay on topic. If you would like your comments entered into the public record, you can email the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofomaha.org. Councilmembers, receive these emails and read them. Finally, councilmembers may ask members of the audience back up for clarifying questions, but not for extra time to speak. We now have a special proclamation from Councilmember Harding to be read for Ms. Deb Ward. Brinker?
Deb, I need you to come on up. I promise this isn't a roast, so most of the comments are nice. Whereas Deborah Ward brought her skill and talent as an award-winning broadcast journalist to Omaha in 2007, joining the organization as the Director of Marketing and Communications before being promoted to Vice President of Marketing and Communications in 2017, and then appointed to Executive Director in 2021. And whereas Deb's distinguished tenure brought focus and heart to telling Omaha's story while building and mentoring an award-winning team, demonstrating exceptional leadership, vision, and unwavering commitment to promoting the city as a premier destination for conventions, tourisms, and special events. And whereas Deb developed and launched award-winning advertising and marketing campaigns for the Bob Carey Pedestrian Bridge and its beloved resident ambassador, Omar the Troll, as well as tourism campaigns targeting convention planners in nearby cities, which resulted in a 25% increase in the 2019 levels of visitation. And whereas, under Deb's leadership, Visit Omaha secured millions of dollars in relief to Omaha Hotels during the pandemic, a 10-year funding agreement between the city and Douglas County, multiple multi-year sporting event contracts, bringing in teams and visitors nationwide, and numerous local partnerships to ensure the success of tourism throughout the city. And whereas Deb passionately showcased the unique charm, hospitality, and world-class attractions Omaha has to offer, tirelessly advocating for the community with professionalism and enthusiasm to elevate Omaha's reputation and profile in surrounding metropolitan areas. And whereas, the impact of Deb's tenure with Visit Omaha will benefit the community for years to come, and she will be profoundly missed by her colleagues, partners, and everyone who shared the pleasure of working alongside her. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Omaha recognizes and celebrates the retirement of Deborah Ward as Executive Director of Visit Omaha and officially designate today, Thursday, or designate Thursday, your last day of employment, July 31, 2025, as Deb Ward Day in Omaha, Nebraska.
We should use that in a campaign.
Hold on. I'm not done. Hey, 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 not done yet. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the city of Omaha to be affixed on this 29th day of July, 2025. Deb, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thanks.
I'll let you, I'll let you have the microphone for a little bit, but you won't be the last to get it.
He went over three minutes. That thing went on forever. Thank you.
We easily could have cut some of that out.
Jasmine probably wouldn't let you. Good job, Jas. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart. I'm not going to say too many words because I'll start crying, but she knows it's true. I started thinking this morning that I have covered this chamber and all of you as a journalist or from my seat in city government as an employee for 44 years. I'm older than the carpet, I think. And I'm like, yeah, that's probably time to retire. But thank you to my work family who's here, Jasmine and Dean, and thank you to my real family who's here. I'll introduce them, but I introduce, if you like Joe, he's my husband. If you don't, if you don't like Joe, he's just a guy I cook for. My youngest daughter, Addie, who's crying for me. My oldest daughter, Samantha, her husband Danny, and my favorite little boy in the whole wide world, Brian. Brian, can you wave? No. He's like, nope, I'm embarrassed. But anyway, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. For all of the tough questions, you made us better, and for all of your support, thank you so much.
You bet. Anyone else? Hold on, don't go anywhere.
Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you for everything you've done. I can't believe, well, you don't look like you've been covering us for 44 years, so I need to know what your secrets are for that, because...
Hair dye. Lots of hair.
I just want to, it's been such a pleasure to work with you for the last 12 years. It really has, and I never held Joe against you.
Thank you.
But you've done so much for Omaha and being on the committee for a number of years. I mean, actually, that was the one committee meeting I really, really looked forward to because you always had something new or exciting that you were doing with ideas, and it never stopped. You had one good idea, but then, once that was over, you were always working on the next. And then trying to make our city, it's such a great place, and I think you marketed it well, and the numbers showed it. Even for COVID numbers, we succeeded and did better than most other cities. And I think that was the hard, that was because of your hard work and the hard work of your team, really. We appreciate it. I'm going to miss you, but you've left, you've left your mark on this city for decades to come. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Please, Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
I was going to say, one other thing, one thing that wasn't mentioned in here that, I mean, it talked a lot about some of your creative ideas like Omar the Troll, but one I think I got to work on with you, which I thought was absolutely incredible, was when we'd have the swim trials here. And Deb came up with this idea before we filled in Jean Leahy Mall and had the lagoon in there, came up with an idea to build these floats that replicated, like, they looked like swimmers swimming in the lagoon during the trials period. But, I mean, her creativity and just kind of the, how she worked with her staff and every one of us at the city, I think, is something that I know we're going to miss, but I know she's always been a strong believer in building her bench, and she weaves behind an incredible staff that will pick up the staff and carry it forward. So, thank you again.
That swimmer's idea was because I saw you on a Facebook post with a swimming cap on.
Well, you didn't.
And I went, is he a swimmer? Hold on a minute. And so you helped us get those high school kids to pose for the swimmers in the lagoon.
Thanks.
Does your family want to say anything?
I don't think so. Do you want to say anything? How much? You really? Okay.
As your daughters come in, I'll quickly say, Deb, there was a great broadcaster, Brent Musburger, when he was watching a Celtic game when the great Boston Celtic Larry Bird was playing, and Bird made a great play, and he said, "You are watching what greatness is all about." And to your family, we had the privilege, I did for four years of working with your wife and your mother, we had the privilege of greatness representing the city and making the city a better place. So, Deb, thank you, and the floor is yours.
My oldest daughter, Samantha Dues.
My mom mentioned covering the courthouse and being a reporter, and actually, what's funny is, I work in the public defender's office for Tom Riley, and she is one of the reasons that I was introduced to Tom and probably got that job, honestly, was because she covered Tom in one of the six-week trials that he had back in the 90s?
The 80s.
One thing I will say about my mom is, now that I have a child of my own, I can see how hard it is to be a full-time working mother and also raise children. She had two, and I only have one, and it's pretty tough. So I am really glad that she gets to retire and enjoy time with my grandson and doing whatever that she wants to do. Thank you guys for doing this for her.
Thank you.
Don't ask any hard questions.
I'll echo Samantha's thank you. It's been amazing to watch Deb for these last 19 years with the city of Omaha, and as you mentioned, Councilman Harding, she spent 25 years as one of the city's finest journalists, and both those jobs pale in comparison to her role as wife, mother, and now grandmother. She's one of a kind. I love you, Deb.
I am so proud of my mom and everything else, anything else she gives me.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you. Thank you. Candy left over for me up there. Item six, to consider a Class D liquor license for Down Under Lounge located at 3530 Leavenworth Street.
I'll open the public hearing on item number six. Is the applicant here today?
Yes.
Please come now.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. Your name and address, please?
Bradley Miller, 111 North 38th Avenue.
Thanks, Mr. Miller. Good to see you here today. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. This is in my district, and you and I had a good conversation. I know you didn't make the meeting last week, but you were palgetic and schedule got messed up, but glad you're here today. You want to just talk briefly about your taking over for Mr. Nozel?
Well, I'm at a loss for words suddenly, which, if you knew me, is weird. I am really happy to be taking over. I think this business has done a lot for the community in the way of its support of the arts, local music, traveling bands, and I'm pleased with the challenge to continue trying to uphold what it has established and take it a little more into the future. I'm not really sure what else to say.
And you've worked there for a couple of years already, correct?
I have, yes.
Did he give an address? And also, have you talked, you and I had spoken about outdoor music. You're well aware of that. There were some prior issues that were addressed with the Leavenworth Neighbor Association. If we're going to have outdoor music, how are you going to continue to monitor that?
As it is now, when we have indoor music periodically throughout the evening when we have bands, we go outside and do sound monitoring just to see the level that we're affecting things from the inside out. As it goes on in the future with outdoor, I would limit how late we go into the evening so that we're not disturbing our neighbors. I understand, having been a neighbor of loud places before in my life, I would rather not be annoyed by people taking advantage. And so, in the outdoor shows I would go, we would have, I would limit how late they go just so that I could be the best neighbor that I could be.
And I appreciate that because I know you learned that from a couple of years ago when we had those issues that it was addressed, and I'm confident you're going to meet with the Neighbor Association as well, the Leavenworth Neighbor Association.
Yes, 100%.
Okay, great. And last thing, are the hours, what are the hours going to be?
We're going to be from 3:00 in the afternoon until 2:00 a.m.
Okay.
My day, sorry, seven days a week.
In music outside, what time does that stop?
As it happens, I would probably only go until about 11 o'clock.
Okay.
No plans for anything in the immediate future. This would all be down the road.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions. Any further lights? Seeing none? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Row. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Again, thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Item seven, to consider a Class D liquor license for Talis located at 17231, 17233, 17235 Evans Plaza.
I'll open the public hearing on item number seven. I believe the applicant is here by Zoom. Good afternoon. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can. Your name and address for, are you a proponent, I suppose?
I am. My name is Molly Miller. I work for Adams and Sullivan, and we represent Talis LLC.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today on item number seven? Seeing none, are there any opponents? No opponents? Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Good to see you, Molly. So I often go to the Talis over in Sarpy County off 370. So is this the same restaurant? You're just opening one here in Omaha?
We're, I believe the goal is to duplicate the success that we've seen in Papillion, yes.
It's a fabulous restaurant, so I'm looking, I'm looking forward to going to the new one here in Omaha. So, thanks so much, Molly.
Public hearing is closed. Is there any motion? Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Row. Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item eight, to consider a Class D liquor license for Tasty Non Kitchen &amp; Bar located at 2112 North 30th Street, Suite 201.
I will open the public hearing on item number eight. Are you here for the proponent?
Yeah, my name is Peter.
What's your address?
Address at 4828 North 160th Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68116.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any other proponents here today on item number eight? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir, can you tell us a little bit about your establishment, please?
So, I'm from California. So I moved here just a year, so when I come here, I look at the opportunity to open a restaurant. So we serve food, and we have, right now, we apply for the drink as well. So this has pushed our income as well, does a helpful loss, yeah.
And what type of food do you serve? I'm curious. What type of cuisine will you serve?
So we really is going to fusions Vietnamese cuisine.
Okay, thank you. No further questions? Motion to approve?
Got a motion in a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Thank you.
Row. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Item nine, to consider a Class D liquor license for NYC Deli &amp; Liquor located at 4004 Ames Avenue.
I will open the public hearing on item number nine. Is the applicant here today? David, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. David Houghton, 2804 South 87th Ave. You're on behalf of the applicant, 4004 Ames LLC, which will be doing businesses, NYC Deli &amp; Liquor, which is located at 404 Ames Avenue. I'd just like to bring to the attention of the council that the issue that we have with this application is, in fact, within 150 feet of a church. We had a survey done, and I think it's at 147 feet. So, in the application materials, you'll find a waiver from the Free Stone Baptist Church, and I'd like, and I should have done this earlier, but hand out a letter of support from the pastor of that church for the business. The hours of operation for the business are going to be 8:00 to 10:00 Sunday through Thursday, and 8:00 to 11:00 on Friday and Saturday. In addition to convenience store items, the business will be serving fresh fruit and vegetables, staple grocery items, milk, eggs, cheese, juice, et cetera, and they're going to have a couple of prepared food options there. What they plan on doing is having a full New York-style deli. In addition, right now, they're negotiations to try to obtain a license to do chicken or a franchise to do chicken as well in that location. And they're going to have a smoothie and juice bar. If you have any questions about the business, my client, Tariq Ali, who is the main member of the business, is here to answer any questions you might have, but entertain any questions the council may have as well.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here on item number nine? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. If the Honoring and Representative could approach the stand, I appreciate that you were here pre-council and gave me the opportunity to learn more about this project. Can you tell me what percentage is going to be prepared foods and grocery items compared to the alcohol that's being sold?
Good afternoon. Usually liquor items, hopefully, it's 20, 15 to 20%. We're shooting for our food section to be at least 40% of our sales, and the rest will be like groceries and beverages.
Okay, thank you. We did, we did see your letter of support from the Freedom Primitive Baptist Church, as well as there did come a letter of opposition. And I just think that there are a few things that, when businesses come into the heart of District Two, that people should understand, that there are concerns, that there is an over-concentration of liquor stores. I one time heard of developer accurately describe parts of this district as vulnerable. And I think that sometimes it's about not only perception, but what's visible. You know, sometimes people will say, well, you know, there aren't any more liquor stores in District Two than there are, you know, in District Four. But sometimes it's the visibility of oftentimes vagrancy, oftentimes just things that contribute to what might appear to be an overall problem in the district. And so, how do you plan to address loitering around your establishment?
Yeah, it is a big concern, and we notice it's going to be an issue. We're looking to have security on the premise to try to control any issues that will come up in the future.
Okay, thank you. And also, I don't know if this is, would be a proposed amendment, but I know the last entity within this area that we did approve a liquor license, we at least recommended the amendment that shooters would not be sold in this establishment or in that establishment. And so, I'd like to propose that for this license as well. I think that's just equitable because it was proposed for a store down the street. Would that be something that you'd be willing to agree to?
Yeah, we would take me to it.
Okay, thank you. It is good to see that there's amenities tied to this project, right? It's not just a liquor store. You're really bringing up an amenity back to the community. You know, this was Peleche Sue's store before it was a church, and so the fact that it's serving prepared food, juice bar, other grocery items, brings a service back to the community. And so I think that's where I would recommend to approve this with the appropriate amendment. I don't know how we need to do that with the council, but that's my recommendation.
Madam Clerk, please?
Yep, I think the amendment you're looking for is no single sales of beer and no sales of distilled spirits of 1.7 ounces or less, which are the airplane shooters.
Yes, that's, that's what I'd be looking for.
Also, David, can we get your client's name and address, please?
Tariq Ali, 5432 B Street, Omaha, 68106.
Thank you. Sorry, Councilmember Goodwin, continue.
Oh, I didn't have any further questions. I would recommend to approve this license with the amendment that Elisa just mentioned.
I second the amendment. So we got a motion and a second on the amendment of 1.7 ounces or less? Roll call then. Are we good on the amendment? Okay. So we got a roll call on the amendment. I'm sorry. Do you guys agree to that ask of Councilmember Goodwin?
I think we would stipulate to that. I just want to clarify, as I understand it, there are 50-milliliter shooters is what we're talking about?
And single cans of beer.
The last amendment we did was the 1.7 ounces or less.
And that covers the shooters?
Yes, that's the airplane shooters.
Okay, to be equitable, then, to that.
I'm just, just for my own edification of my clients, is that the same unit as a 50-milliliter unit? Okay. Thank you.
But David, did you hear, she also added on the single can of beers.
It was admirable. I mean, the only comment I guess we'd have is, we spoke about it a little bit before, it's important that every business that enter the marketplace, at least in our view, has the ability to compete with the other businesses around it, and frankly, the other businesses around it are allowed to sell single-serving beers and malt beverages. We would absolutely stipulate to the shooters, and if it's, if it's, if it's, if I take it to mean that it won't happen unless we agree to it, I just want to make a record of the fact that nearly every other business in the city of Omaha with a Class D license is able to sell those products.
So, to be clear, I do want to recommend the amendment that was similar to our previous liquor license on Ames Street. So, and it was simply the shooters. So, and it was simply the shooters, just to be clear.
My recollection is that it was beer and shooters.
Oh, so it was beer and shooters. Yeah, and so, so this is what you have in this area, to be clear, is many of the churches are, and although you did have the support of the churches near, you have an entire alliance of churches that understand the vulnerability of this community. So when they see an entity that's new come in and it looks as if it's just gonna be a liquor store. Then their concerns have to be heard as well. And so I don't believe this will prohibit business. And if it was the same amendment that we allowed about two weeks ago, then that's what I'd ask. And I do wanna be consistent as a new councilperson representing this district that we have that kind of consistency across the board. I think what's gonna make this, um, success is the fact that there's prepared food, that there's groceries, um, that there's a juice bar. I mean, I'm excited to even try it. And so with that consistency, that's what I'd like to recommend. Do you agree to that?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we would stipulate to that, thank you.
And I, and I really think what you're gonna find is that the community is going to be more welcoming of that. And, uh, the fact that you've already started off with the recommendation and support of a nearby church in this agreement. Now, I have something to go back to the community in championing your success as well, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
So I would like to recommend first the amendment? Is that what I need to do?
Um, I'm just gonna read the amendment once again. So it's no single sales of beer and no sales of distilled spirits of one point seven ounces or less, airplane shooters.
Yes. So I'd like to recommend the amendment.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
In my opinion, the awkward position your client is in is being a hundred and forty-seven feet within the limitation. And I, I think that's significantly different than the, uh, previous license that's been referred to. So, that being said, you're, I just wanna hear you confirm to me that your client is comfortable not selling single beers in the small liquor shooters.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
No further lights, so listen on the amendment, correct? Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
And we need as amended.
And then as amended.
We need a motion.
Okay, and we add a second. Thanks, everybody. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item ten, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Peace Ridge, replat one, located northeast of two hundred and fourth and Harney Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I will open the public hearing on item number ten. Applicant, good afternoon.
Hi, uh, my name's Ben Drews. I'm at one zero eight three six Old Mill Road. I'm with Thompson, Drews and Dorner, here on behalf of the applicant and here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Item number ten. Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second, roll call.
Melton. Rowe. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item eleven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Omaha North Stadium, YMCA, located southwest of thirty-fourth Avenue and Ames Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I will open the public hearing on item number eleven. The applicant, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, my name is Jack Suter. Address is sixteen zero one Dodge Street with McGrath North Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, New Street Properties. New Street Properties is the developer of Project Game On, which includes a state-of-the-art football stadium for North High and a state-of-the-art new YMCA in replacement of the Butler Gas YMCA. We are extremely excited about what this project is gonna bring to the North Omaha community. It is entirely funded by, uh, private donors and will not require the use of any eminent domain. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today on item number eleven? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodwin, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Suter.
Good afternoon.
Is it Suter or Suter?
Suter.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a rendering to show?
We do. Is this projector working right here?
Push your arm up.
Got it.
So I'm excited for several reasons. Disappointed because this isn't a Central Eagles project, but other than that.
They have a nice stadium.
Yeah, we got ours first. But anyway, um, my daughter helped to conceptualize this project when she was at Omaha North and with other students, uh, in their engineering program. So to see now it moving forward in that, you know, you've got students that now are in, um, their careers, um, that can come back and speak to the genesis of what their ideation was for this project is, is important. Um, I know one of the stops years ago for this project is that they didn't wanna displace any homes. And so the fact that the reconfiguring happened to, to allow for that to, uh, be mitigated is important. But can you tell us a little more about the project? It looks beautiful.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a state-of-the-art facility. There's actually gonna be a performance track around it, too. It's not gonna be a full-size competition track. But, you know, the students can train there for track and field as well. There's gonna be some other sports teams that can use it as, uh, like soccer. And, yeah, we're extremely excited for the partnership between the Y and North Omaha and what it's gonna bring to the community.
Thank you. You know, as I talked to one of your partners at McGrath North a few weeks ago, one of the things that I really wanted to encourage is if there's any way, even through volunteerism, that, you know, the team, and I know it's multi-layered, uh, that will work on this project, can look to help support the neighborhoods around it, even if it's planting trees or, you know, litter control and beautification. Oftentimes, projects like this come in and they're great for the immediate area, but there's not always that uplift, even on a basic level, of the surrounding neighborhoods. And so, um, I look forward to talking to that team at large about how we can work together to ensure that the surrounding neighborhoods see a little bit of an uplift to, even if it's just a vacant lot cleaned up or a fence repaired, because I think that helps people to feel like they're a part of the progress, too.
Right, yeah, we can absolutely take that into consideration. And with it being right on the Ames corridor, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, it, it's sitting adjacent to several neighborhoods, so appreciate that. I have motion to approve.
Motion and a second, no further lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Items twelve through fourteen can be considered together for South Farm, replat four, located southwest of a hundred and forty-fourth and Pacific Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item twelve is an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement. Item thirteen, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item fourteen, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
I will open the public hearing on items twelve through fourteen. The applicant, good afternoon.
Hello, I'm Jamie Heideman, commercial real estate broker at CBRE, one one two one three Davenport, six eight one five four, here on behalf of the applicant and a proponent.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Right here. Thank you. Okay, right here. And your name and address for the record, please.
Um, my name's Anne Kotros, K-O-T-R.
Ma'am, we're on items, um...
Twelve.
This is on item twelve?
Twelve.
Okay.
Oh, no, is it? No. Oh, I'm so sorry. Uh, you're right, it's fifteen, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Stand by, you're just fine. Is there any? So is there any opponents for items twelve through fourteen here today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Melton. Rowe. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, an ordinance to rezone property located at five one zero eight Reed Street from R two District to R four District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial of request for rezoning to R five, but approval of request to rezoning to R four.
The public hearing is now open on item number fifteen. Is there any proponents here today? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are you today?
Good, thanks.
Freddie Ellis, Omaha Nebraska, twenty-one ninety-six Parker Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. Uh, here just to have this rezoned, R four, subdividing the land and wanna build two homes on this property.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today on item number fifteen? Seeing none, opponents, please.
And, oh, thank you. My name's Anne Kotros, K-O-T-R-O-U-S, and I live at seven one zero seven North Fifty-second Street. And honestly, the only reason I know about this is because, um, I live within three hundred feet of the property, so I got an automatic notice. So I just wanted to give you guys a kind of a feel for the neighborhood. Right now, we have housing, uh, houses for humanity going up to the east of us and also in the future to the north of us. We used to have a totally enclosed neighborhood with two entrances and exits, both on Mormon Bridge Road. Already, there's been access to one of these new neighborhoods, and we've already seen increased traffic, um, heavy machi, lots of heavy machinery already and fast traffic. So, so anyway, I just wanted to give you a picture, some pictures of what our, our houses look like. There are, you know, nice old ranches. Page one is Peggy and Tom's house. They walk their dogs twice a day. Um, page two is actually Diane's house there. She's my neighbor, next-door neighbor. Page three is my house. You can see it's, you know, large lots, nice houses. Um, page four is actually kind of, well, it's my empty property. It was a spare lot. When I first bought my house at twenty-nine, the homeowners thought that they offered me this property that, so I could roll it in with the mortgage. They did not, so it was up for sale separately. The plan was exactly that, to split it into two properties sixty feet wide and put two houses on it. It would have absolutely killed the look of our street. It would have killed our housing, our property values. The last page is a shot of the north side of my property. That tree next to the house, it's about five feet away from her house. It's, it looks like it's about ten, but it's not. So if you think about how, how wide that would be, she would have had a house almost directly next to her. Anyway, I thank you for your time, but I hope you don't put this, I hope you don't split these house, or split this property into two, because it's, like you, like you said, I feel like our neighborhood is already vulnerable, and I think this is just gonna add to it. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents here today? Good afternoon.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Scott Tunstall, seven one seven six North Fifty-first Street. I live right next door to that property. By him putting two properties on there, he'll put them right on top of me. So it's like, I just want the peace. It was nice, the trees and everything, but to have two and the traffic there, to me, it'll, it'll become more congested. And it's a slight hill to get to the corner, and then from the corner to get up to the hill to get to Mormon Bridge Road, it's a hill. You have all of that. And if I could show you... The property, that's it prior to this. Okay, this is a property now. That's the property now. I was the one that kept it, the first picture. I always kept that lot cut. I don't know, because it's my neighborhood. I wanted to, you know, to represent. And like now, it's going to sort of crap. But, and still, with two properties there, it will put both of them or the properties itself on top of me. And I'm like north of the property, right north of it, so, and I could show you my property. And this is my property there. And that's, that's the way the whole thing would look. And I still kept all of that clean the way it is, so, and I feel that, I don't know, putting two there would really push up on me, you know, so, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other opponents here today?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I'm against this, as I was a similar type thing last week on this, uh, changing the district. You have a single property, maybe it's two vacant lots in this case, that you wanna make high density for the mayor's, former mayor, planning department's concept of density for Omaha. Well, my area, my area in Dundee, this has happened too, and what it does is bring in four cars to each small property, college students or whatever, more parking for the residents that have been there for a long time that is now gone. Four unrelated people, or five, or six, or whatever you want for density. I think you need to be more open with the people about this. It's not a whole district, but because you call it a district, this will allow you in this area or my street to bring in more people to existing small houses, to put four, five and six people in there. It doesn't say family. It could be unrelated people, college students all over Dundee now, sharing one small property. This is what it brings. So maybe it's time to stop the high-density thing for single properties. Go ahead and build your big multi-rise apartments with TIF financing and leave us that have the small properties, single-family residences alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents here on item number fifteen? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ellis, please. Are you the property owner?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So do you have a rendering, rendering of this project, or can you tell us a little more about what you're planning here?
Yes, I do. So let me just pull up some images. I just kinda downloaded some things on my phone, kinda went through the same issue before, explained my stance before, just building, uh, two single-family homes. So I've been back and forth in communication with, uh, like PJ Butler from the city and Michael Carter as well. They told me basically the lots are facing, the lot is facing Reed Street along this area right now. They suggested turning it this way to go on Fifty-first Street. There's like four houses on that, uh, side of the street right there. So it's a pretty quiet neighborhood overall, which is good. Uh, I know she brought up, uh, Habitat for Humanity and, uh, that nature, but this is something I'm building on my own, as a spec home, I have my own business, so...
I know she brought up Habitat for Humanity and that nature, but this is something I'm building on my own, as a spec home, I have my own business, so it's nothing to do with Habitat, but I do wanna, you know, provide homes that aren't outrageous for the community, but with that being said, it's not like Habitat for Humanity or anything like that. Here's pretty much the site plan for the two homes that would be on there. And then, here's an image of like what the homes look like, so there'd be single-family ranch-style homes, four bedrooms, two baths upstairs. Two bedrooms, two baths upstairs, two bedrooms downstairs, one bath. And that's pretty much my project.
Thank you for that, will they be for sale or for rent?
They'll be for sale.
Okay. So, one of the neighbors mentioned that the, the property's no longer being kept, or at least he show up, showed a picture of that. Have you been maintaining it regularly?
So after my first hearing, I did receive a letter in the mail that the property was overgrown. I had purchased the property, I want to say, back in like March or April, and I hadn't had a chance to do any maintenance to it at all. And so I had them come out after I received the letter in the, in the mail from the city, had it cut down, and I actually had my guy coming back out this week to do maintenance on it. And while it's still in the process of being subdivided, I plan on keeping it up, and I am gonna have to knock out some trees on the property. My goal is to try to keep as much up as possible, so that they can have that divider and that separation, so they don't have to worry about, you know, looking at two homes when they do go up. So I'm trying to be as respectful to the neighbors as possible, as far as like leaving as much vegetation up as possible, as far as like trees when I do build, and just making sure that everything goes in accordance to plan.
Mr. Ellis, have you talked to the neighbors about these plans, have they seen the renderings?
I have not had a chance to talk to any of the neighbors directly, I did speak to one neighbor when I was over there looking at the lot one day, and I told her, because she called me over and said, hey, you know, what's going on with the lot, and I told her, you know, I purchased the lot, and this is what we're gonna do with it, and she was kinda in denial about it, and I told her, you know, this is what I plan on doing, separate, subdivide, and you know, and you can't do that, you can't do that in this neighborhood, and I'm just like, okay, you know, I just go my own separate route, because if you, as you seen, not to knock anybody or anything. Second time, people have come down for this, and like I said, I'm just an individual business owner, just trying to make a living, so.
So, this is my first time hearing about this project, whether it be proponent or opponent.
Oh yeah, definitely.
But what I'm hearing is concern neighbors about how the property's been maintained, since there's been acquisition, and the fact they don't know what's going on.
Yeah.
And perhaps, with some of those steps being mitigated, you might have more agreement?
I don't, I don't, I'm unsure, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to speak out of turn.
Right, I'm simply recommending that.
Okay.
Because they're reasonable concerns. You know, a property that you were maintaining out of volunteerism, and now someone buys it, it's overgrown, you have to get a letter. So then the property owner's thinking, is this my future? I've lived here for decades, and now is this gonna be an eyesore? So these things are better. You, you could maybe mitigate that if you come in and talk to the neighbors, and they, and they understand what you're trying to do, and then there's regular upkeep. I know there are other lights, but I'm gonna recommend a layover, and this is my first time hearing this, because I don't really have a side, other than what I'm hearing, and that you're, the neighbors have some reasonable concerns, and I think that if it's not mitigated now, then there're gonna be continued concerns that could be handled upfront.
I understand that, until your point, and as I stated before, I have somebody coming out to maintain the property. The guy that I was using is, more was down, and so he's gonna be on a more consistent basis, coming through like bi-weekly at least, to go check on the property and make sure that the grass is maintained. My plan is to, like I said, build, and so as far as like the overgrown vegetation and things of that nature, it won't last long, because I would plan on building within like the next one or two months, that's why I'm here, so everything's pretty much going to be pretty much leveled out and everything, so they won't have to face any of those issues at all. As far as, you know, be maintaining, upkeeping the property, and then like even when they are in there doing construction, I make sure of that, all the trades are doing what they need to do.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, there was a motion to lay it over. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. Ellis, and this was actually on, on the Planning Board, so it did get, there was public comment opportunities then too, so I, and I, that was, may have happened before you were on, so I'm not, I'm not sure when exactly this was on Planning Board, but, you know, I'm looking at the, the, you know, the proposed conceptual plan for, for the, for the replating of this, and, and showing the two residences on there. You still have twenty-five foot setback on the, the rear yard, and I'm looking kind of at Bridget. What's the difference between the rear yard setback on R two to R four? I think it's still twenty-five feet, is it not?
Yes, it is, the setbacks and side yards will still be the same.
So really, nothing, nothing changes in, in that sense, really, what, what you're doing is, and, and there's, there, the, the front footage as it faces Fifty First Street, which I think you mentioned that that was a suggestion to orient it that way. What, it's still, you have, it's, looks like to be basically, if you could pull, you had one picture up there that probably had the, the measurements on there better than, than I can come up with here, but it's over, seems to be over a hundred feet. No, you had one that had, it was actually a picture with, there you go.
That one right there.
Load that up a little, I'm trying to look at, and then move it, there you go, so you have basically seventy feet of frontage on, on the lower lot, and you've got a hundred and seven feet of frontage on the, on the upper lot, if you will, as it's oriented here, so. I mean, these are, these are, you know, very, let's see, you even have the, I don't think you have the, the size of the, each one in there, but, but these are, those are, you know, very ample-sized lots, and, and the proposal is to put a single-family residence on each one of those, correct?
Yes, yeah, that's all I planned on, do I know there were concerns before about me coming in and trying to build like multifamily, and I'm not doing all that.
And I know you've said that on the record too, so, and it's, and I, I do understand that the neighbors' concerns about, you know, I think you probably should have done a little better job of maintaining the property since you acquired it. I, I don't know if you thought maybe you were gonna be able to get under construction prior to, to this point. I would suggest that you, you make sure that that's, that's done as you continue on, as you, as you continue on down this path, if, if it's approved today. Make sure you, you maintain that property, but, you know, the, this is, this is not out of character with really the, the size of some of the lots in the, in the rest of the neighborhood. And again, I know this was, there were some of these concerns. Address it, the, the Planning Board, Planning Board passes six to zero. I think it's a good use of the property, it's, it's not, and to the point someone brought up earlier too, about the number of cars that might be there or not, that, that has no bearing, the, the people who live in the, the properties in the rest of the neighborhood, that could change, they could have, you know, I, I've got, you know, kids in, in my house, and when they're home, you know, we have four cars at the house, and when they're not, it's two cars, so. You know, you can never, they're public streets too, so my, my point is, is that I, depending on how many residents may or may not be in this house, or the house across the street, it has no bearing on me, and I don't think it should have any bearing on the decision we're making today, but. And I, I understand that the Councilmember has, has made a, a motion to lay over for a week, I didn't hear a second on that.
I'll second it.
I shouldn't have brought that up, sorry. No, I was going to anyway, but it was, okay, yeah. All right, well, if it, again, I, I think there's, there's been opportunities for, for people to comment on this before, whether or not you met with them. If, if you were just, if this were zoned as it was today, and if it was zoned as it is today, and you came in, and you wanted to build an eight thousand-foot single-family residence on there, all you would have to do is submit the, the plans, and you get a building permit, and you could go on, underway. The only reason you're really having to, because you have to do the rezoning, to get to the point to submit plans for your two single-family residents, is the only reason you're here today, so. With all due respect, I don't know really what a week's layover would do, I understand the, the request for that. I, I would be more supportive of, I, I think he's, you know, I, I think he's done his, gone through the proper procedures, gotten, gotten it through Planning Board. It's before us today, I don't see a reason for a layover at this point.
I guess I have one more question over that. So when I came in before, I thought it was approved from the last meeting, I thought this one was like the actual rezoning where TD two would be here, but I guess it was our, I thought it was already approved to the prior meeting.
Yeah, that was just at Planning Board.
Okay, that was just the Planning Board, okay.
So this is the next step for the final approval.
Okay, I understand, it's my first time going through the process, so I'm learning.
Thanks, Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
Can you go back to the plat that showed the, the final two lots?
So not this one?
No, the, the one that, yeah, there you go. How far is it from the driveway to the intersection?
There's twenty.
The, the, the other, the other driveway.
There's twenty-five feet as well.
How much?
It's seventy feet from the intersection.
It's, okay.
Oh, seventy feet.
So seventy feet, okay, we're good there. I, I guess, maybe Mr. Harding can help answer this question. Why couldn't he just do a lot split? And do the same thing?
Well, that's, well, I guess you could ask Planning why administrative lot split wasn't done, but I, I think they decided, the original request from the applicant seemed to have been to rezon it to. R five, that was denied at Planning Board, but they amended it down to R four, which then passed six to zero at Planning Board. So I, I don't know why the original application may have been for R five, maybe Mr. Ellis can answer that, or maybe someone suggested that was the way to go about it, but the Planning, the Planning Department and the Planning Board recommended then it be R four rather than R five. Now, I would assume there's probably some setback reasons for that, Bridget, maybe.
Would an administrative lot split come before us?
No.
Okay. Can you, Mr.?
But it probably required, it probably, yeah, it probably required, I'm guessing, but it probably required, it couldn't be done administratively, because, because of maybe the size of the, the lot from R two to R four necessitated that it be done through.
It'd still be eighty-nine hundred square foot lots.
Yeah.
Comments?
I would like to ask Michael Carter, he's the current Planning Manager, to come up, and I think he can give you the details.
Council, Mike Carter with the Planning Department. Yeah, so basically, to maybe understand sort of what happened, Mr. Ellis applied for the rezoning to R five, and then as part of our process during our review of what was being proposed, it was determined there was some information that indicated that he wanted to go to R four. So as that went forward, by the time we sort of determined that, it had already been advertised as R five. So as far as that goes, that's why you have sort of the split recommendation, so we had to make the recommendation on the R five, and then he was comfortable that what he chose to go to for the R four, and that was also acceptable. Actually, R four and R five would be both master plan compliant, we would have supported probably either one of them, but he had requested that it go to R four. As far as the, the replat, yeah, the, the current R two, there's probably not enough land to split it into two separate lots. So part of the, the R four justification for the replat is to create the two lots and, and to allow that.
What was, what would the setbacks difference be between R two and R four?
R two, you're probably looking at like forty-foot front yards, the rear yards, I think, would be the same twenty-five foot, and it's a little bit wider side yard, it's probably ten foot in R two versus the five foot in R four.
But the, but the only, the only area that would make any difference is between these two residents.
Yes.
Because the backyard setback, where it would go up against the backyard neighbor, that twenty-five feet stays the same. As you mentioned, the, the front yard setback, again.
It's twenty-five feet, I think, in this case, for R four. And that would, again, that only affects these two residents. The five-foot side yard setback is the only place where it would make any difference really is between the two.
Or you'd have five foot on.
And on the, on the.
North.
North a lot too, yeah.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I don't know, to me, it, it, I guess the point I was trying to make, and I, I still think it's a valid point, is he probably could have done this with an administrative lot split and still been able to build the homes in there. Yeah, you're looking at forty feet, but if you, you know, add it all up, I think one was a hundred and nine feet deep, the other was a hundred and ten feet deep. I think he had the depth. But I, I'd like the, the owner to come back up one more time, thank you, sir. Just a quick question, do you have your financing set up?
Yes, I do.
Okay, is, is there, is there a start date tied to your financing?
Well, I'm waiting to have everything subdivided up, and then once that's done, I just need the lot addressed so I can move forward in the process, but I'm already approved and everything, so I'm just, this is the last thing, so I can get the addresses to my lender, and then they could put that on pretty much like my application, not even my application, but for the appraisal, pretty much basically. So I'm just waiting on this to happen, and it's complete.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to be clear that I understand this project's gonna happen, right? And whereas maybe number of cars and things of that nature, you know, is going to increase, and other than people driving safely, you know, there's not a lot that's gonna change there, but I do think that when neighbors express concern about overgrown lots, right, and then them not having the communication of a developer, that it's valid. So whereas one of my councilmembers says that he doesn't believe a week would change anything, I believe it could build some goodwill. I believe that it's important for these neighbors to know what's coming into their neighborhood, that it's going to be well cared for during the process, because honestly, I heard some excuses, just to be quite frank. Also, overgrown and abandoned vacant lots is a huge issue in this district. And so when you start to see it, and it seems as if it's increasing, you think, okay, what's happening to my neighborhood? And so that's all I'm saying, and I'm asking this council not to simply hold up a project, but potentially build some goodwill among this developer and among the neighbors, and then to get their support. If you got a letter, you probably got the letter from the city, so that meant that you weren't handling business at that front. So I'm asking you to help me as a councilperson, but also to reach out to those neighbors. I understand the project's gonna happen, but perhaps we build some good, well, perhaps we build some goodwill if in fact the neighbors are, are wanting that, that, that's my point here, that's my point.
Yeah, and I do plan on keeping the property maintained as well, so. From here on out, I'll make sure, like I said, I have my lawn guy, he's on standby, he'll be there this week as well, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Goodwin, Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
I can tell you have something to say. I'm not a mind reader, but why don't you come up, and I'll give you an opportunity? That, I can't do that?
No.
I apologize. So what am I allowed to do? All right, disregard, I apologize, I thought I had the ability to call you up and make a comment. So I apologize.
No further lights, a couple comments I'll make. I agree with Councilmember Goodwin that neighbors of goodwill, Mr. Tunsell's back there, and he took it upon himself to mow that lot, because he's got pride in the neighborhood. I haven't had the privilege to meet any of the neighbors from up there, but Mr. Tunsell doesn't remember this, but 40 years ago, we worked at the dishroom at Creighton together. And his work ethic 40 years ago doesn't surprise me, it's carried over to the reason, as a neighbor, he's mowing that lot, because he wants to continue to have pride in the neighborhood. So I'll be glad to vote, uh, to make a motion and lay this over for a week. Councilmember Goodwin made good remarks, she's new to the council, but she's connected to the community. And this, I think, happened in, in May at the planning board, so I can appreciate being a new councilmember, trying to get up to speed on every project that's on the agenda, especially the ones that are in your district. And, and I don't usually like to lay things over that have been to the planning board, but I've been on the council where I've been new, and it's for goodwill for you to reach out to those neighbors and let them know what's going on, because I think that goes a long way in having the, the communication and the understanding that maybe it hedges a lot of these things off. So, no further lights, we got a motion to lay over for a week and a second. Roll call.
I guess, can I, uh...
Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Row. Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
No.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, four to two. Item 16, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to PUR overlay district located at 3552 Levinor Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I'll open the public hearing on item number 16. Is the applicant here today? Is there any proponents here today?
Hi, Paul Gregorella, Lamparneerson, 14710 West Dodge Road. I am the civil engineer on the project, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today on item number 16? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. No further, no lights, roll call.
Melton. Row. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 17, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to PUR overlay district located at 3005 and 3006 Emmett Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I'll open, we'll open the public hearing on item number 17. Is the applicant here today? Good afternoon.
Hello, Mark Detlef, Airheart Griffin and Associates, 3552 Farnum Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents on item 17? Public hearing is closed. And a motion and a second, roll call.
Melton. Row. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on agenda items 18 through 27 were held on July 22, 2025. Any council discussion? Got a motion and a second, roll call.
Melton. Row. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 28 through 43 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item, number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address who you represent, and if you're a proponent or opponent. I will open the public hearing, are there any proponents on items 28 through 43? Mr. Gray, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, Ben Gray, 6946 North 54th Street. Um, I'm here on item number 43, and just to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents on items 28 through 43? Matt, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. Matthew Oberst, 324 North 91st Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114, representing, um, items number 35, 36, and 37 for the Blackstone Business Improvement District. Here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Matt. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents on items 28 through 43? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second, roll call.
Melton. Row. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 44, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 11, Article 2 of the Omaha Municipal Code, entitled Food Inspection and Protection. A is a request from Douglas County to postpone this item, and B is an amendment of the whole.
Council discussion on item number 44. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Some email exchange I had, I had with Dr. Hughes. I agreed to make a motion to lay this over to August 19th, and out, the motion will be for both A and B.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, so we gotta vote separately on each one? Okay, okay, thank you. No further lights, roll call.
Melton. Row. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero. Items 45 and 46 can be considered together, they are resolutions to approve appointments to the North 24th Street BID.
I will open the public hearing as in items 45 and 46. Are there any proponents here today? Seeing none, are, is there any opponents here on items 45 and 46? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second, roll call.
Melton. Row. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero. Goodwin Epstein's. Item 47, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for Janiah Meese versus City of Omaha in the total amount of $137,500.
I'll open the public hearing on item 47. Are there any proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second, roll call.
Melton. Row. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 48, an ordinance to rescind the landmark designation of the Grand Theater located at 2920 and 2922 North 16th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I will open the public hearing on item number 48. Is there any proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 49 and 50 for a crossroads phase one. These are ordinances to approve master agreements for professional services related to and for construction of parking facilities and retail buildings.
I'll open the public hearing on item number 49. And 50? And 50. Mr. Levy, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, David Levy, Barrett Hommaugh Firm, 1700 Farnum Street, here on behalf of Millu LLC, which is the project entity of Woodbury Corporation, who is the redeveloper of, uh, this relevant phase of crossroads. Um, this is a very exciting day and a long journey here. Uh, with approval of these contracts, they can take the necessary steps to mobilize and get out there and start construction. So, uh, we, they and I would appreciate your approval, and I do want to thank you all for, uh, going on this journey with us and, and supporting this project. I know it's been, it's a complicated project and process, and we've been before you a number of times, taking a lot of your time, so thank you for that. And then, again, this is, this is very exciting. This is the last step here before we see, uh, big yellow machines out there and dirt moving and, and things coming out of the ground. So, appreciate your approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other proponents here? Seeing none, is there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm opposed to this, because I don't think there's enough transparency about it. I have a lot of citizens around Omaha that keep wanting to know, oh, what the hell is going on or not going on with the crossroads? I have to tell them I don't know, because you guys do not tell us. But anybody with a sensible common, liquor common sense knows that, oh my God, the cost of this project, whatever it is, has to be going up. Why hasn't there even been a shovel of dirt turned? How many years has it been sitting vacant? Uh, and we thought this garage was going to be tore down for a whole new one. Now that's changed. Maybe the other building that was former retail, maybe that's gonna be saved? It keeps changing, and obviously, the cost for it has to keep going up. And the cost of that to the taxpayer through property taxes or some other form is going to go higher and higher. So please be totally honest, and maybe the public will accept it better. Most of the public is against it.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents here today?
Uh, yes, sir. Omaha City Council, Don Yara Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street. My job for the next year is to keep Mr. Harding out of trouble, and to get him in the House of Representatives in Congress, and Mr. Butler to take over the West Road Mall.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents on items 49 and 50? Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 51 through 75 do not require a public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Motion adjourned. Second. Got a second? Roll call.
Melton. Row. Goodwin. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:21.